Okay, next up, we will move on to our candidates for Burke County Board of Commissioners. So I welcome to the front Brian Barrier, Jeff Britton, Johnny Carswell, Sean Freeman, Scott Mulvey, and Mike Stroud. Okay, we will begin with an opening statement from each candidate. Each candidate will have two minutes. Again, I remind you of your timekeepers up front, and we will be proceeding down the line alphabetically, so we'll start off first with candidate Barrier.
Good evening. My name is Brian Barrier, and I humbly ask for your vote for county commissioner. I'm a lifelong resident of Burke County. I'm married to Michelle, who's been a public school teacher for 29 years. We have two sons, Trevor and Luke. We attend Pleasant Hill Baptist Church, where I've been a deacon, help teach youth Sunday School, and I'm on the Finance Committee. I'm on the Community Relations Council for Avery Mitchell Correctional Institution. I'm on the Finance Committee for the Catawba River Baptist Association and a member of the Christian Businessmen's Connection. I served as chairman of the Burke County Republican Party from 2021 to 2023. I currently serve on the Executive Committee for the 14th Congressional District. I graduated from Freedom High in 1990 and immediately joined and served honorably in the U.S. Army until 1996. I worked in high and furniture manufacturing, both on the floor and in leadership. I moved into the automotive industry and have spent the majority of my career in retail sales, outside sales, and business-to-business sales, along with an operations role as a district manager overseeing 15 stores, hundreds of employees, and multimillion-dollar budgets. In April 2019, I purchased and now publish The Blue Ridge Christian News. Please remember this: I pledge to be available. Many of you have already reached out to me via phone, text, Facebook, and email. If you have, you know I've responded, and I always will. I pledge to oppose all efforts to increase property taxes. I pledge to be transparent and have open communication. I will use social media and other communication methods to let you know what's going on in the county. I pledge that any vote I take to spend your hard-earned tax dollars will be like it was coming out of my own pockets. I pledge to never cast a vote for a major project or expenditure until I have reached out to the citizens of this county for input. I'm your most conservative limited-government candidate. I'm Brian Barrier, and I humbly ask for your vote for county commissioner.
Thank you, candidate Barrier. Candidate Britton.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Britton, and it's been my honor to serve the citizens of Burke County for the last 12 years. My wife Cynthia and I were both born and raised here in Burke County, and we've raised our three girls here and now have four grandsons. With my whole life invested in Burke County, I want to see our county prosper and grow. I attended Mole Elementary, Salem Junior High, Freedom High School, and then furthered my education at NC State University, where I received a BS degree in electrical engineering. Upon graduation, I was fortunate to begin work with Rutherford Electric Membership Corporation, where I'm still employed. I've been with them for 40 years, and it's my pleasure to manage the Burke McDowell service area. Cynthia and I are active members at Mount Home Baptist Church, where I have served and serve on many different committees and capacities, and also enjoy our music ministry there. I'm a member of several civic, professional, and local organizations, including the Rotary Club of Morganton, Professional Engineers of North Carolina, having previously served on that board and president of the board. Also been a member of the Burke County United Way Board and served as officer there. Also Burke County Chamber of Commerce, where I also served previously as chairman of that board. I've had the opportunity to work in leadership positions, both professionally and personally, and understand the importance of working together with others for the common good of all. We must think past tomorrow and continue to develop long-range plans that will keep us on track for the future of our families. With that in mind, we must make smart decisions that will adequately serve our children and our grandchildren for many years to come. As your commissioner, that will always be my top priority.
Thank you, candidate Britton. Candidate Carswell.
Thank you. I'm Johnny Carswell, and I want to thank the chamber and to everyone that is here tonight in this audience. I've had the honor of serving as your commissioner since February of 2011, and I would consider it a privilege if you would give me the opportunity to continue to serve you as your representative on the Burke County Board of Commissioners. I realize, just as you do, the uncertainty of our future and that the leaders you elect today must have vision and the common sense to ensure Burke County is the greatest place to live, work, play, and worship. My wife Brenda and I have lived in Burke County all of our lives, with our four children, our 12 grandchildren, and our six great-grandchildren. When I look into their faces, I too am concerned about the future, and I can assure you that it is my sincere desire to see Burke County prosper. I took an oath as your commissioner to ensure that the taxes you pay are used responsibly, and I've lived up to that oath. I have fulfilled my duty as a commissioner by voting for responsible budgets that were balanced, both in an accounting sense and in their priorities. I believe Burke County needs to continue to make smart advancements in education and economic development while being cognizant of the mandates that are being forced on us by the federal and state governments. As your commissioner, I will continue to ensure that our spending is neither short-sighted nor wasteful, no matter the demands that are placed on us from any of these sources, and I will make sure of the correct decision about what constitutes a needed expense. This election, like all other local elections, is about trust, and I am asking that you continue to place your trust in me to be the common sense leader that moves our county forward.
Thank you, candidate Carswell. Candidate Freeman.
Yes, my name is Sean Freeman, and I'm a lifelong resident here in Burke County. My wife and I have been married for 32 years, although if you ask her, I think she said at one point 33 years, so it's a little bit longer for her than me. We have a daughter, Emma, who has produced us a grandson who we're head over heels with and in love with. What I'll tell you is I graduated East Burke in 1989. I've always been focused here in the city and within our county. I was a public safety officer at Morganton Public Safety for quite a few years. To be able to get advanced, but I did have to leave the area for my profession, and I went to the coast at Bullhead Island, where I was assistant chief of public safety there. In an effort trying to get back to this end of the county, I took a job at Beach Mountain and ultimately retired at Black Mountain. Immediately after high school, of course, we had the Gulf War breaking out. Before my wife and I got married, I ended up going and joining the military, and I came home and we spent a day together, and then I shipped right out. With that being said, I'm a member of the Disabled American Veterans Chapter 43, a member of Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 23, and a member of the Police Benevolent Association. My goal is to come back into this county and, where I've been able in the past, to provide things to other counties and other municipalities, to be able to do those same things here. This I pledge. I pledge that you will have my undying support for you. You will have the voice returned to you as the people, and before any decisions are made, we will hear and take your input and let you be the voice that's heard to make those decisions.
Thank you, candidate Freeman. Next up, candidate Mulvey.
Thank you, Susan. Good evening, everyone. If you learned anything about any of us tonight, be friends with the Register of Deeds in their staff. Just FYI, I have a long list of accomplishments. I will go into those and boardings that I've been on, so that is on my campaign page. What I would say is I'm extremely proud of our record. Jeff and Johnny and I have been serving together as a team since 2016. As commissioners, our two main responsibilities, and we have a lot of responsibilities, is hiring the county manager and setting the tax rate. In the last year, we hired a new county manager. Many of you met this gentleman. I don't think Mr. Epley's here tonight, but I will tell you, he is a rock star and a rising star recognized throughout the state. In the last year, because of revow, we decided to lower our tax rate by 13 and 1/2 cents, which equated to 20% to offset that revow. Also in the past year, while doing this, we increased public education funding by 23%. We increased public safety funding by 13%. We are now historically in the best fiscal shape with a credit rating by Moody's and S&amp;P of AA+ , which is the 12th highest in the state. I've been working as a financial advisor for Edward Jones for 21 years. I think I know about budget. This reflects a strategic plan to increase our general fund while also keeping our debt very low. We continue to recruit new business and expand existing business. By doing this, we expand our tax base, which lowers the tax burden on individual taxpayers. This is resulting in over 800 high-paying manufacturing jobs and over $200 million in new infrastructure investment in the last three years. We have great relationships with our schools, chamber, college, and others.
Thank you. And next up, candidate Stroud.
I'm Mike Stroud. Thanks for everybody being here. You guys know me. Man, I'm honored to be sitting here with all these prestigious people. You know, I'm a blue-collar guy. I own Stroud's Building Supply. I've been here since 1990. I'm from Rock Hill, South Carolina, York County, and I love it here. I married a girl up here, and I've been here ever since. I've had a business here for 24 years. Stroud's Building Supply still trusts us. My wife is Samantha. I have three sons. Joseph is one of them here. I'm a very proud father, and I'm a very proud citizen of all that we do here, but I'm a different person. I'm all about business, and I'm all about bringing things up, and it just don't seem like it's brought up enough for me. It seems like it's always a struggle for me in anything I've had to do with the government. It's never customer service to me. I'm a customer service guy in business, building at Lowe's here in town, building my business, and everybody's got to be approachable. They got to be able to see and talk to each other and commit with one another, and that's one thing I'm about. I'm about transparency, communication. You know, I know we got things up there. My rock star is Alwyn March. I don't know if she's here somewhere. She's CFO of my company. You know, man, I like the ladies. I like the home team people. I'm all about the home team, the county. We haven't done enough in my mind for the local people. We got a lot of things going on, but it just don't feel like it. It just don't feel like it. You know what I'm saying? In my mind, the people I thought know just don't feel like it. You know, it seems like we just need a little bit more, and I'm all about a little bit more in doing things. Well, I want the best. I know everybody says that, but when I ride around, I don't see the best. I don't see the best-looking streets. I don't see the best-looking buildings. I mean, everything looks a little dilapidated to me, and I don't mean to be throwing the stones. I'm all about bringing it up, and so that's me. I'm all about doing good things and bringing people up and being transparent, and I'm excited about what's going to take place. I tell Scott, it's like a rassle-off, you know? We all love one another.
Thank you, candidate Stroud. Thank you. Now I invite the candidates to open up. And again, if you would, please hold your applause. Candidates, please open envelope number one. And the first question: "The proposed Great Meadows Megasite has drawn a lot of attention in recent months. Some have stated that the site is a transformative opportunity for the region, while others have voiced concern about negative impacts on the environment, unsightliness, and traffic problems. How will you balance advancing Burke County through economic development while preserving natural resources, making Burke County nature's playground?" And to begin this round, we will start with candidate Britton.
All right. Thank you very much. This is a project that has garnered some negative press in our community. That's unfortunate, I think. As we look at this project, we see lots of potential. A lot of that potential's happened in the eastern part of our state, because that's where North Carolina has focused a lot of its efforts. This project will allow us to bring more and better higher-paying jobs to our community. When you look at all the statistics, we have a below-average wage. We have 22% of our young people who aren't working between the ages of 16 and 24. We've got 20% of our children living in poverty. A project like this would bring better and higher-paying jobs that would impact all of those areas. It's almost like a domino effect. Those jobs would impact each one of those areas, along with every other area that drives our folks down. So I believe this is a positive project for our community.
Thank you, candidate Britton. Thank you. Next, candidate Carswell.
Thank you, Susan. I'm going to echo everything that Jeff said. We don't have enough time here to go into this question like it should be. I would like to say that we have not received enough information to even take a vote on this project. BDI has asked for a variance in the ordinances of the zoning, and that's all that has been placed in front of the Burke County Board of Commissioners. With that, I would say I have to wait on more information before I can do anything. If this comes to fruition, as Jeff said, we will have jobs that we've never had before, and the people in Burke County deserve jobs, just like the people in the eastern part of the state where the five other megasites have been built. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Carswell. Candidate Freeman.
Well, I think first we have to address the fact that citizens were blindsided with this. They were not given the opportunity to step in and be heard and be told what was going on, or even, you know, a thought put into this. I think when we're looking at major jobs and things like this, we've got to pull the citizens' input in first. Before we spend the very first cent on moving forward and addressing these things, we have to put the citizens first. You know, I agree the fact that we do need these jobs here, but do we need it at the expense of farmlands, timberlands, and damaging our water resources, potentially? We have to include our citizens in these decisions, and we have to give them their voice back.
Thank you, candidate Freeman. Again, we are recording this evening's event, so we appreciate if you hold your applause until the end so that the recording is clear. Next up, candidate Mulvey.
Well, I agree on a lot of different points that have already been stated. I will say that with a great opportunity brings great responsibility, our greater responsibility. There's some things that I think BDI should have done beforehand, so we've asked BDI to go back to the drawing board before it ever shows up to us again. And look at rightsizing the project. There's no need. Regardless of what comes, whenever it comes, we have no idea. But what I would say is there's strategies to bring jobs in a responsible way that protects Burke County environmentally. I'm chairman of the Board of the TDA, Tourism Development Authority, brings in $130 million a year. I'm doing nothing to jeopardize that. We can right-size the application. We can introduce conditional resigning. There's a lot to work with. I would ask you, I've addressed this subject on YouTube, YouTube, North Carolina Video, Fireside Chats. I've been doing them for 18 months.
Thank you, candidate Mulvey. Thank you. And next up, candidate Stroud.
Yes. Well, this is simple for me. It comes down to maintenance. It comes down to taking care of what we already got. You know, we already got that one in the pocket, it seems like. We on lockdown on that one, so we got that like an ace in the pocket, so we can always do that. But we haven't done nothing with the micros, what I call it, the micro site. We can't take care of what we got already. We got an industrial site out there already. Let's look inward for some of the businesses like mine and R&amp;R and hometowns, even manufacturing. Hey, we can do all the homes you want to do right here, do everything right here. Home, we can make. Think of what one Ford, Henry Ford, could do in Morganton. That's what we're all for. We got the home team. We got the best people in the crowd here, and we all agree on these things, but we're not using them. We always looking outside and all these different things. We got the best people right here. We can manufacture anything we want to do right here and bring everybody up right here. I'm all for the blue-collar people, peoples out there in the service industry and working and stuff like that. We ain't got time to take care of things. We taking care of our families and everything else.
Thank you, candidate Stroud.
Thank you.
And we'll wrap up this round with candidate Barrier.
Thank you. I kind of alluded that I'm the most limited-government conservative candidate that you're going to see tonight, and I mean that in all sincerity. I think government's got to get out of the way and let private industry, if they're going to develop, let those people do that. But I'll tell you this: I reached out on Facebook initially before anybody, because I had people calling me saying, hey, you're a candidate for commissioner. I want to know what your stance is on the megasite. And it's not about my stance, it's about your stance. You're the taxpayer. So I put the question out there, what do you think about the 1,400-acre megasite? And some people didn't know, so I shared the article. Some people called, I mean, all kinds, but we got 300 comments is my point to this. 300, 400 comments, people, my family, my friends. And because of that, I took the stance that I'm totally against the megasite, because they are. You're the taxpayer, not me. I mean, I'm a taxpayer, but I'm going to be representing you. So what I'm going to do is what the people out there in the county want to do, and I'm going to ask for that feedback before we start on any kind of projects or soliciting this kind of stuff, because, and Mike's right, we do have an industrial site on Cathy Road that's 79 acres.
Thank you, candidate Barrier. I now invite candidates to open up the second envelope. And the second question reads: "There are a number of social issues facing Burke County. The overdose death rate is higher than the state average. The number of individuals who are unsheltered is a concern in our communities. The number of youth ages 16 to 24 who are not working and are not in school is higher than the rural metro county average. Opposition to the memorial statue of a Confederate soldier at the historic Morganton Courthouse is regularly voiced at meetings of the county commissioners. Taking into consideration these issues, what is your vision for the future of Burke County?" We will begin this round with candidate Carswell.
Thank you, Susan. The overdose death rate is higher than the state average. I think everyone in this room knows that we lost our son to an overdose. As president of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, I travel this state, I travel the United States preaching about overdose and the death of children. I hope it stops in Burke County. With my initiative called "One More Thing," we're bringing together officials from the National Association of Counties and prominent members of every county in this state to address the issue of the overdose death rate. Ladies and gentlemen, you can't close enough borders to keep fentanyl and drugs out of Burke County. It will never happen. Unfortunately, that is the world that we're living in right now. As far as oppositions to the memorial statue of the Confederate soldier, that is state law that it cannot come down.
Thank you, candidate Carswell.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up, candidate Freeman.
Thank you. Overdose has been an issue for going on several decades now. I just recently lost a family member myself to an overdose of fentanyl. So I'm not downplaying the fact that we have a problem. You know, is turning the Burke Catawba Detention Center into a regional drug rehab the way to go? The one thing I will say is I don't think it's the way to go by putting the burden on the taxpayers of Burke County. I think it's much larger than that. I think that we have to look to the federal level to start addressing these issues. I think that we've got to pull the federal government in, and we have outside agencies such as our faith-based organizations who do things such as this as well. We cannot continue to burden and grow our government and burden our taxpayers with things like this. We've got to use those outside resources. And again, as far as the Confederate statue is in...
Thank you, candidate Freeman. Next up, candidate Mulvey.
And I politely disagree on the Long-Term Care Recovery Center. When you look at the issue, when we talk with, and I'm on the ACC Executive Committee, Johnny's the president, we talk with counties across the state, across the nation, and it's a national issue, but it's also unique to each situation. We have an opportunity to place a Long-Term Care Recovery Center. The state is very interested in making this one of four locations in the state, and they're willing to partner. We have, we were leaders in the lawsuit that got us the recovery monies, and so, that being said, I think it's a good idea. The number of youth that are not working or not in high school, obviously, I'm a trustee here at the college, been a trustee for nine years. We recognize that problem. We put resources inside the schools to capture those students, bring them to Western Piedmont. We've built a skilled trades building to answer that.
Thank you, candidate Mulvey.
Thank you.
Next up, candidate Stroud.
Yes. Well, I've dealt with this for 40 years. I've been doing things like this with different religious organizations my whole life, and I'm always concerned about each and every person. You know, that's the heart of all of us. We got to care for one another. That being said, people choose to do hard drugs, just like we choose to drink our Starbucks or whatever we're going to do. Building a regional, that stuff's got to fall in state, in my mind. I mean, that's kind of like washing the hands, you know, all this kind of stuff. We can't keep up with what we got. I mean, if Bron can come in there and do some things, we're not using what we got. You know, and I know I'm probably the wild card out here, and I'm like, what the heck is he talking about? But people don't know, I'm all about maintaining what we got and taking care of what we got. If we can't maintain what we got, how we going to do something else? And on the Confederate thing, y'all know how I feel about that, and I've got podcasts on that. Most of the citizens, you know, my white friends, they say it's okay. My black friends, they don't like it, you know? What's up with that? You know? I'm all about bringing us together. You know, we the United States.
Thank you, candidate Stroud. Candidate Barrier.
Yeah, so for the youth, you know, there are a lot of youth sitting at home. I've read the commissioners' minutes of a lot of the meetings and strategic planning and saw those statistics, and, you know, we got to get back to igniting the youth, and we do that through talking to you people, okay? It all goes back to the citizens of the county. What do you want us to do? Yes, you elect us to take care of things, but there's 90,000 people in this county and a lot of smart people, and if you ask them, they're going to give you some good answers. I've already gotten a ton of good answers when I've just asked. And so I think, again, we got to reach out to people, ignite the youth. You know, we used to have TV commercials. We got social media today. All these kids are on. It costs very little to reach out to them and ignite them and get programs from the churches, all the faith-based stuff, like Mike was saying. There's plenty of churches that'll do it if we just get out there and ask them, so we can ignite the youth. The opioid treatment center, I'm going to talk about that. I myself lost three siblings to drugs and alcohol effects of those things, and so nobody cares more than I do. I just think that treatment center, where it's at and how it's going about is not a good idea, and I'm going to talk just a little bit about that here at the end.
Thank you, candidate Barrier. Candidate Britton.
All right, thank you. Substance abuse does continue to be a scourge on all of our society, particularly here in Burke County. Our numbers are above average, and we see that all the time. We're responding to one overdose daily. Our EMS responds to one overdose daily. Most of us may not realize that if we don't deal with it in our families, but it's an ongoing scourge. We were fortunate to be a part of the lawsuit. We've got millions of dollars coming into our county to help us address some of these issues. I am certainly in favor of working with all of our partners in the county. We got lots of good folks, faith-based, as well as others, who are doing good work with substance abuse, and I'm proud that we've got that money that we can help. But also, the long-term facility can be a great help to these folks who simply have difficulty stepping out of substance abuse. So again, I go back to economic development. That will fuel...
Thank you, candidate Britton. Thank you. We'll move on to round three, so if all candidates will open the third envelope, please. And the third question reads: "Every year, the county commissioners go through a budgeting process and hear from county departments in regards to their needs to carry out their responsibilities. Knowing that financial resources are limited, how will you make your budget decisions and what will be your priorities?" We will start this round with candidate Freeman.
So again, I've been through municipal government and been in municipal government for over 30 years. You know, when you talk about budgeting, you know, it's our responsibility to set a budget that's responsible, that shows good stewardship of the taxpayer dollars, and once that budget's set, we don't just go through that. We've got to look for alternatives such as grant-source funding opportunities. We've got to look for other ways to do this. However, when we're doing this budget, we have got to work closely hand-in-hand with other elected officials. If we do not pull those people to the table and prioritize what we need and then start making long-term projections and making strategic plans to move forward with those, we will simply continue to hammer ourselves into the ground and not have the ability to get what we need to stay state-of-the-art with our emergency services and things that draw people into this community. We've got to work hand-in-hand and establish these priorities.
Thank you, candidate Freeman. Candidate Mulvey.
As I said earlier, you know, I'll go back to our financial position, AA+ rated by S&amp;P and Moody's. That's because of our fiscal policies and the responsible fiscal policies, low debt, low taxes. We're great in our savings fund. I will say, as far as budget goes, we do a zero-based budget now, and so just because you got $100,000 last year doesn't mean you're getting $100,000 this year. You've come before, every department, all 28 departments, come before our county manager, and they make decisions, and they bring it to the commissioners, and they have to prove what they need in their budgets each and every year. And in addressing this, I will also state the efficiencies we put in place by finding efficiencies within government through grant writing. We hired a grant writer two years ago. That's helped alleviate the budget and the taxpayer burden. We have budget analysts now that have streamlined processes and found savings throughout government.
Thank you, candidate Mulvey.
We're doing exactly what we're supposed to do. We're doing exactly what we're supposed to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, candidate Stroud.
Thank you. You got to have the right people in place, you know, like Brian Epling, and we've talked with him from a business standpoint, ourselves, our business, and you got to have good people, got to have good staff. I rely on Arlen March and my wife to do things like that, because Arlen's a superstar, like I said, and I think you got to have people that know how to run the fence line, know how to manage things, accountable. I'm all about the making the money part of it, you know, bringing things up, but you got to count for everything, you got to use it the right way, and are we using it the right way? Everything seems so elevated to me. You know, when I'm doing business, I'm always competing, and I can compete to beat Lowe's and everybody else, but everything seems like it's so much money to do anything that's reasonable. Fair profit, a fair margin, fair to the people, work things out, make sure things are always done right, pay all your bills, pay your suppliers, and man, it works out when you do it like that. We can cut things and we can work things by running the fence line. I think we just got people that are not motivated.
Thank you, candidate Stroud. Candidate Barrier.
Yeah, so I do like the strategic planning meetings that they do. I've read all those and taken some notes. Back in 2020, at one of their strategic planning meetings, the buildings were being gone over, and those were rated from one to five, and a lot of these are ones and twos in condition, they've been around a long time. But I'll tell you, I was really surprised, one of the commissioners that are here tonight said he was surprised at the condition of the buildings, and that alarmed me, because in seven years that he had been there, I would think, when I was a district manager, I went to every store, I looked at the condition and the morale, the condition and morale. I wasn't there to micromanage my general manager, but I wanted to see how my store looked and how my people's morale was, and it alarms me that we're in such a bad condition. And so, we are making some priorities here. They've got a capital improvement plan, and I can't go through all that, I'm not going to have time for that today, but please stick around and ask me some questions, because I've got all the data and I'm happy to share it with you. But, but we can do it, but we're going to have to get tight on the budget, and we're going to have to cut back government's for essential services. I'm going to just pound that and pound that, essential services.
Thank you, candidate Barrier. Candidate Britton.
All right, thank you. We, in fact, do have a budget process, and as we approach that, the question is, how will you make your budget decisions? Well, we make those by looking at every department. Every department has needs. We have some 28 different departments in the county. Our citizens expect and demand a reasonable service, and so as we look through that budget and we look at those departments, we try to determine, and, you know, what do our citizens expect? And so that's how we go about deciding what to spend in each of these areas. It's not about, you know, one over the other. Every department's important. Today, you might need EMS service, tomorrow you might need the sheriff's service. Every department's important, and it's important that we look at those carefully and allocate funds reasonably. That's our mission, that's what we try to do.
Thank you, candidate Britton. Candidate Carswell.
Thank you, Susan. As I said earlier, I took an oath as your commissioner, ensure that the taxes you pay are used responsibly. Ladies and gentlemen, we do that, you know that, you've seen the budgets when they've come out. We got to pay for education. Education is priority for our kids here, and I am so glad that we were able to give more money into education this year. We need to pay the money for economic development. If you need an ambulance and if you need a sheriff's officer, we make sure that you have those coming to you. We have not spent a dime, not a dime that should not have been spent, to make sure that this county survives and what it is supposed to serve you as the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Carswell. We will wrap up with a two-minute closing statement from each candidate. We'll begin at the far end with candidate Stroud and work our way back towards me, so candidate Stroud, two minutes.
Well, thank you once again for being here. Thank the commissioners and the candidates, appreciate all you guys, we're all family. We'll get through this, all of us, but I believe there's a new way, a new vision. I think people are ready to come up, and I think people are ready for somebody that's motivated. I'm motivated, I've been here, y'all seen my business, and we haven't even started. We haven't even started manufacturing, we haven't even started. There's no homeless problem, we got homes sitting down on the yard, people just got to be involved and get up there and do it. You got to be invested in our community, you got to be doing something, you got to clean it up. Man, and I'm all about that, we can cut the trees back, right down the street, this is my thing, right down the street. It's still like we're in the last century still. I mean, we got busted stuff up, I mean, it's the simple stuff to fix to me. Who's the concrete guy, who's the asphalt guy? That's the way I think. I cleared a bridge down here at Stone Bridge for $300, and my lawn guy, and people are like, wow, we can see the traffic through there now, you know, and there ain't no homeless under there, because you can see it. It's got to be landscaped, it's got to be looking good. We got to be the best in everything we do. You can check me out at electmikestroud.com, and I'm excited about running with Sean and Brian Barrier.
Thank you, candidate Stroud. Candidate Mulvey.
Oh, thank you. First, I'd like to thank you, Susan, for hosting, or the chamber for hosting, Susan, you for moderating. I've been in that job for many years before I got elected, so you're doing it quite well. I'd like to thank our opponents and my fellow county commissioners for tonight's event as well. I will say, I appreciate people recognizing that our strategic plan has been very successful. Our capital investment plan is thorough and well-thought-out, so I won't go into that. The, one point I did want to make, and it's brought up several times, is about transparency. And I would like to point out that all our meetings are public and are on YouTube and are free to view at any time. But I will get a plug in, because I got a little cut off earlier. Fireside Chats, I've been doing those, started these in 2022. They are on YouTube, they are video, or, like I said, available on YouTube. We discuss timely topics such as budgets, schools, Burke development, tourism development, school of science and math, revow, other topics like Great Meadows Project, which is about a 25-minute good watch, I would encourage everyone to do that. And our next one will be concerning broadband. We're working hard on trying to get broadband coverage for 90% of citizens in Burke County in the next several years. So just go on YouTube, search Burke County and Fireside Chats. I'd like to close by saying that our commissioners are a team, and we have achieved success as a team. We have great employees, they're bought into our vision and deliver excellent client service. We continue to provide them the tools to succeed. Our feedback from the public has been extremely positive, and if you want to continue this momentum, this proven leadership, vision, success, vote for Scott Mulvey, vote for Johnny Carswell, and vote for Jeff Britton. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Mulvey. Candidate Freeman.
So in closing, I would like to thank the college and the chamber for having us here. I'd like to thank everyone that's here for showing up. This does my heart good to see everybody take such notice into the political realm of what's going on in the county. In closing, I was going to set up here, and I was going to talk about stats and throw numbers out of things that have been brought to me by citizens of what's wrong. I was going to talk about the fact that the citizens are saying there's lack of transparency and lack of communication from our government. However, I'm not going to say that, this is what I will say. If you look at the preamble in our constitution, there are three words that are emboldened in the constitution, and it is "we the people." "We the people" means the government serves the people. That was reiterated some years later in 1863 by Abraham Lincoln in his Gettysburg Address, when he said that "this nation, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom," and that "the government of the people, by the people, and for the people shall not perish from this earth." I will tell you that you have three viable challengers sitting at this table who care very much about this county, about its people, and we value the input and want to restore the voices of the citizens to our local government. So when it comes time to vote, and I encourage everyone to get out and vote in early voting, this makes a difference. Vote for Sean Freeman, Mike Stroud, and Brian Barrier for the three seats that are open. Make your voices be heard.
Thank you, candidate Freeman. Candidate Carswell.
Thank you again, Susan. And let me reiterate, I'd like to thank the Burke County Chamber of Commerce for having us here this evening, and I want to thank all of you in this audience for taking your time to listen to the candidates. Ladies and gentlemen, I still embrace the vision for America and Burke County that was established by our founding fathers. I still believe America's strength lies with you, the family. I still believe that free enterprise is the most effective and just economic system that we have, and that economic freedom is essential to human liberty and dignity. I still believe that we should expect excellence in public education and that effective and efficient protective services are provided for everyone here. I still believe we should expect our elected leaders to be competent, effective, ethical, and responsive to the needs of the citizens of this county. Again, all elections are about trust, and I'm asking that you trust me to be your representative on the Board of Commissioners, so that together we can continue to bring new life to Burke County. Again, thank you for being here, and may God bless our county, our state, and our nation. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Carswell. Candidate Britton.
Thank you. I've chosen to run for reelection to Burke County Board of Commissioners because I believe I can continue to make a positive difference in our county. Over the past several years, we've made great strides to improve work productivity with investments in human capital and technology all across county departments. We've made community investments in EMS, the sheriff's office, our library system, DSS, senior services, public education, as well as parks and recreation, improving availability of all these important services to every one of our Burke County citizens. And we've done that while maintaining the 83rd lowest tax levy per capita. I think that says a lot about what we've done in terms of maintaining a low tax rate. We've developed a dedicated team of talented professionals who continue to analyze our county services and work to meet the needs of our citizens effectively and efficiently as possible. I'm proud of these accomplishments we've made over the past years, but there are new challenges before us. The successes we've seen in economic development, along with the location of our new North Carolina School of Math and Science to our county, continues to demonstrate the need for affordable and workforce housing. We need to continue working together to address the housing shortages, and we're doing that. We are also continuing to challenge the need to skilled labor in all sectors. I want to continue working with our school system, our community college system, our economic development team to address all of these needs. Economic development and education must continue to be our top priorities if our county is going to grow and thrive into the future. Burke County should never be satisfied with below-average performance in any area, and as a commissioner, it's my goal to provide quality, necessary services to our citizens at the most economical price possible. As an electrical engineer by training and having worked in the utility industry for 40 years, served in my church.
Thank you, candidate Britton.
And worked on many boards.
Thank you, candidate Britton.
I appreciate the opportunities to serve our county.
Thank you. And we will close with candidate Barrier.
I believe government exists to provide essential services only, yet we have continued to grow the size and property of local government. Every piece of property the government owns is a piece of property taken off our tax base. No home will be built, no business established, shifting the tax burden to you and me. Under their leadership, Burke County has become one of the worst counties in North Carolina for opioid overdose. Under their leadership, the homeless population has exploded. Under their leadership, citizens have been kept in the dark on major projects and expenditures until the deals are done. They built a $22 million jail, when at the time, now-retired Commissioner Maynard Taylor stated that "we could have renovated the jail for $3 million." Now they're full steam ahead on renovating the old jail to turn it into a long-term regional opioid treatment center. Sure, let's bring addicts from other counties, and when they don't get clean, where do you think they're going to settle? Last year, they approved and purchased 4.25 acres of land just off Highway 18 and paid $400,000 for four acres, $100,000 an acre. We have 79-acre industrial park adjacent to I-40 at the Cathy Road exit that's been empty since 2005. Just recently, one company started building on the 30 acres, but the rest is still empty. Now the Great Meadows mega site has been announced, over 1,300 acres in pristine land near Lake James.